Okay, everybody, it is 6:01. I am calling this meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Here.
DePena will be here shortly. Councilmember Graziano.
Here.
Notari.
Here.
Rovell.
Here.
Strumelob Burke.
Present.
Mayor Milham.
Here. Sunshine.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, July 1st, 2021 additions of the Belville Times and Star Ledger. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Belville Town Hall bulletin board, and copies are on file in the municipal clerk's office.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the next item on our agenda would be a presentation. Normally, we do that before we go into executive session, but I do not see the mammals that are being part of the presentation are here. So we are going to skip that for now. I'm going to entertain a motion to go into executive session strictly for the reason of discussing personnel and contract negotiation for Courtland Street. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
A motion made. And second clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena, Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumelob Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Milham.
Yes. So we're going to have to clear the room, unfortunately. No action will be taken while we're in executive session. We should not be all that long. We will resume the meeting after executive session is concluded. Again, no action will be taken. I think we're ready. So we had adjusted the order of the meeting just a bit. Normally, we do presentations before we go into executive session, but we were missing our main mammal.
Presenting.
K-9. K-9. Okay. So now our K-9 has arrived. He's an important guy, so he's a little late sometimes, which is okay. So we're going to go back in our meeting and go back to presentations. The next item on our agenda is a multiple presentations to Lad, the service dog, as the council prepares to honor Service Dog Appreciation Month for the month of August. We only have one meeting in August. That happens to be the middle of the month, so we are going to honor service dogs today, knowing that in about two weeks, it begins August. So with that being said, I'd like to... Can Lad hear me? He can hear me.
Wake him up.
Lad is here. We have Lad, the service dog. He should be no stranger to anybody here in Belville. Vin, do you want to...
Yeah, you want to do this one first.
More general, so let me go first.
Yeah, you do first.
And then Kelly, is that mic on? Do you want me to come down there? We have two different...
Lower that mic if the dog's going to speak.
We're going to ask Lad to say a few words afterwards.
His is in general.
So the mayor and council are celebrating Service Dog Appreciation Month with two different resolutions. Can he give a high five? Can he do anything? What can he...
Can he attack him?
Oh, look at that.
I've had many reluctant handshakes in my mayor career. That was certainly one of them.
I know what that means. I know what that means.
Good judge of character.
Okay, so the mayor and council have a proclamation. This is a generic proclamation, which is in honor of Service Dog Appreciation Month. It says, "Whereas assistance dogs transform the lives of their human partners with physical and mental disabilities, and whereas guide dogs assist people with vision loss, leading those individuals around physical obstacles and to destinations such as seating, crossing streets, entering and exit doorways, elevators, and stairways. And whereas hearing alert dogs alert people when the hearing loss to the presence of a specific sound, including doorbells, telephones, crying babies, sirens, other persons, buzzing timers, indoor sensors, knocks at the doors, as well as smoke, fire, and alarms." So we're basically honoring three different types of service dogs there. The fourth one is called service seizure alert seizure response dogs. Wow, that's a tongue twister. "They alert and respond to medical conditions such as heart attacks, stroke diabetes, epilepsy, panic attacks, anxiety attacks, post-traumatic stress, and seizures. And whereas medical response dogs alert or respond to oncoming medical conditions such as heart attacks, strokes, diabetes, epilepsy, panic attacks, anxiety attacks, and post-traumatic stress disorder. And whereas International Assistance Dog Week from August 1st through the 7th provides an opportunity for us to raise awareness of the selfish way these types of assistance dogs assist individuals with mitigating their disability-related limitations. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the council, the township of Belville, are joining forces with assistant dog partners, organizations, and concerned citizens throughout Belville and America to raise awareness of assistance dogs and to observe International Assistance Dog Week and hereby declare August 1st through 7th as International Assistance Dog Week in the township of Belville." Congratulations, Lad.
You don't have a treat.
Don't give me a shake.
You want to say something?
Would you like to give him a...
Sure.
I think he cares more about that than you.
Now he's my friend. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Lad. I think we have another proclamation for Lad.
This is specific for Lad.
Specific for Lad.
Yes.
You know what? Are you taking pictures?
Yes.
Can we get Lad to turn around?
Good lad.
He's looking perfect. That's perfect.
He's looking at you, Vinny.
I know. He's like, "Come on, give me another one. I want another treat." Okay, so now we have a proclamation specific here for Lad, so let me read this real quick if you want to hang out there a minute. So, "Whereas Lad, the service dog, is a staff member at Zentai Martial Arts who helps in teaching students with disabilities. Whereas Alan and Naomi DePena welcome Lad as their newest member to their staff at their business and after-school program on Valentine's Day, 2020. Lad comes from K-9 Companions for Independence, a nonprofit that enhances the lives of people with disabilities by providing highly-trained assistant dogs. Whereas Zentai Martial Arts is incorporating Lad into their programs that will change the way that they serve their students with disabilities. Lad knows more than 40 commands that assist students with physical and developmental disabilities, including picking up items, tugging, and crawling. Students gain self-confidence and leadership skills by learning to give Lad commands. Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, Lad went door to door to visit students' homes to deliver bags full of goodies to brighten up their days and bring smiles to their faces. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and municipal council do hereby honor Lad for his dedication and loyalty in helping people with disabilities and wish him every success now and in the future." Congratulations, Lad. Yeah, yeah.
Mayor, if I may just acknowledge, yes, Taylor and Ashley, they are Lad's puppy racers. And many people might not know that through this organization, there's our volunteer puppy racers. So they raced Lad for two years, and they delivered to the world an amazing dog that now gets to change so many lives. So thank you so much for being here. We just want to take a quick picture before they go.
That's got to be tough to let a dog go. That's got to be killer. That's got to be tough.
I couldn't let my cat go after a week.
I know.
That's tough.
So we will give them a minute if they want to exit the meeting and not necessarily stay for the rest of the business. We can definitely do that. Next item on our agenda, we're flip-flopping a little bit, is going to be the discussions. So this is considered the first meeting of the month, even though there's only one meeting in the month of July. The first meeting in a month is always mayor and council discussions. I will remind the audience, although I see mostly usual faces here, these are topics that we put on the agenda to discuss amongst ourselves, our professionals, our administration, any or invited guests. We're not being rude, but we are discussing them amongst ourselves. If you do hear something that you want to comment on, you most certainly have that right to do that during public commenting later. So at this point, the first item on our agenda is for discussions. It is... It's my topic, actually. I only have one today. It is the new footsle field. So for those of you who do not know, Belville is quickly becoming a soccer community, which is great, and this council has done great work with regard to square footage of overall turf in our township, upgrading our recreational facilities. With that being said, this is something that happened quite organically. I had seen a newspaper report about New Brunswick and about a soccer player that I follow, former U.S. national player Tim Howard, who was the U.S. goalie, and he was unveiling a brand-new footsle field. So footsle, think of it as a larger basketball court that's kind of fenced in. It's for five-on-five. It focuses on quick footwork and really good training. So it's a small soccer field. Well, really small, yeah. It's slightly larger than a basketball field. And I reached out to them, just sent them an email. Turns out that the main guy, which is a PDA, Player Development Academy, if you have children or nieces like I do, you are very familiar with PDA and Player Development Academy, traditionally costs anywhere between $3,500 and $5,000 to have one of your children play in it. Their nonprofit focuses on bringing recreational facilities to children who may not have the ability to pay that money. So I reached out to them proactively. They were very quick to respond. They were interested. We did bring them in here for a caucus meeting. They made a nice presentation to us. We saw that they were willing to donate a field. We had some talks about greatly upgrading the complex down at Number 9 School, which is mostly municipal, so much so that we already have a pot of money that we can draw from, which is not taxpayer money. It came from a developer in that area, and that money is contractually obligated to be reinvested into the neighborhood and provide turf athletic facilities. It was perfect timing. So they're going to put one field in. We are going to put another field in using our developer money. And then that being said, I don't like to do things halfway, so we've had a lot of discussions about what else we can do down that field, and it looks like down at the Number 9 complex, I call it Number 9, the school district really only has access or has the grass field in their purview. Everything else, there's an old playground there, there's kind of a parking lot there, there's a double basketball court there. That's all municipal. So it turns out that we're going to be looking to put not one but two brand-new footsle fields into that area. First one coming for free, the second one coming by way of a developer's community giveback. And then as we look to expand the entire complex, I was down there today with Councilman Cazarelli and the manager, we're looking at redoing the basketball courts down there. We're looking at redoing the playground down there, and since it costs next to nothing, adding potentially a second dog park there. Meanwhile, we may have extra money left over from the developer, again, not taxpayer money, that we're going to partner up or ask the permission of our school district, since they help us so often, we help them sometimes, to take that ball field that's extremely underutilized because it doesn't drain properly, it's grass, it's dirt, to re-turf that field. So we have the ability, this council, to once again turn over another outdated recreational facility and make it state-of-the-art. And it also includes lighting. I'm not sure if I mentioned that. Lighting for just the footsle fields. So that's, I think, a fantastic opportunity for us. I do think it comes through St. Barnabas, Robert Wood Johnson, St. Barnabas, Players Development Academy for the first field. Their contractor will build the second field that we will pay for with our developer money, and then we'll look to engage either an engineer or somebody to come up with a comprehensive plan to really redo that whole area. Timeline is quick. The footsle field, they told us today that if we had the memorandum of understanding on the agenda today, they would start building it tomorrow, and they would be done in 10 days. So we're going to pump the brakes on that. I'm hoping that we can approve this resolution at the next council meeting because I know the manager needs some time to put some more pieces together. I don't want to piecemeal this thing. I want to get it right the first time. So very excited about that. Any questions by any member of the governing body?
I just... Just a question. So is that the same pot of money that we were looking to do the recreation facility with?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we're probably not using all the money.
Okay.
And that's a great point. So traditionally, I'm going to speak to you, but I'm going to also speak to the audience who I'm not supposed to be speaking to. Traditionally, historically, when we did a redevelopment deal or a pilot deal in Belville, that money with the community giveback went right into the general fund, and it poof, and it went away to something we didn't know. Now, we collectively have taken the opportunity to take those pots of money and reinvest them. They're supposed to be reinvested into the neighborhood. It was going to be a stretch, and we really never got a definitive answer as to whether or not we could relocate that money far up at the high school. It was supposed to be obligated to be used in the neighborhood. But that said, we're not using the entire pot of money, and we have a developer adjacent that we're going to get the same deal out of, we believe.
Okay.
Anybody else? Questions, issues, comments? No? So I would look for that memorandum of understanding to be on the next council meeting. Counselor?
Yes, we just have to work out that... Yes, we just have to... I got a new draft yesterday, and we're going to work out that second field as part of that as well.
I mean, you got it yesterday. We couldn't have it on the agenda today? What were you doing for the last 48 hours?
At 6... I got it last night at 6:28.
I say that because I know exactly what he's been doing for the last weekend, actually, and that's working on another ordinance. So that's it for me. Next up is Councilman Graziano.
Yes, just want to ask the town manager, is there any movement on the gas solution that we've been discussing, or I know we have some issues with our current gas, our pumping? Talked about a couple of solutions, so I'm just...
So included in your packet is the state contract gas provider, so to speak, as far as the software package that keeps track of which vehicles get which amount of gas and things of that nature. It's a state contract at $65,000. We did speak about this particular option some time ago. Didn't think the council was leaning towards spending the $65,000 on this mechanism. I believe we recently, or is in the process of installing a camera that's on the actual gas pump, which helps with some accountability. It's not, obviously not a system like that's presented that I obviously distribute it from Slack, but you know, at the desire of the council, do we want to pursue this? Again, it's $65,000. It would computerize every municipal vehicle. There's like a little ring that goes into the vehicle, so if a vehicle other than a municipal vehicle pulled up and the hose went into it, it would not register it, and you couldn't get any gas out of it. So obviously that helps. These programs come with monthly reports and things of that nature. But again, that was one option. We also had our purchasing department look at the possibility of us closing the tank down and getting gas from a third party. So we would have like one or two local gas stations, one that would obviously be open 24/7 for police and fire of that nature. So that was also a second option that we discovered. I'm sorry, second option that we covered. And certainly, we have not had any other conversations since then, so I certainly kind of put the ball back to the court of the mayor and council as far as...
Is there any cost to the second option?
Well, the second option is we buy our gas wholesale.
Okay.
So the option B of us going to an independent... Because if you go to a third-party retail, the accountability is better. We would get a discount. It would be a small discount. We would go out to bid, and anybody that's within an X amount of mile radius could submit a bid. Hopefully, the local gas stations would submit.
Right. So don't we... In the past, if I remember, we supply all gas, right, not only for municipality but for the Belville Board of Ed?
Board of Ed, too, right?
Right. So we do all of that. So right now, there is no meter reading. There's nothing like that accountable for gallons that come in, gallons that go out and stuff. I mean, we're watching it.
The accountability is done manually.
Is accounted. So...
Done manually.
So, you know, I just have concern about that in general. And I remember when I first came on, that there was an application, or something broke, we were looking to it. We were upgrading all the infrastructure. We did that. And having an application, having, you know, just accountability reports and stuff like that that you can track, right? I think it's well worth it in general for the town. But I just don't like the freelancing of it. And I say freelancing in all respect, but just the camera watching it, I don't go for it. And you mentioned something about the other piece of, you know, looking to go somewhere else to get it at a retail rate compared to us getting a wholesale rate, and there is a difference. Because looking at that, there's like right now, we pay, we would pay about $230 outside. We're paying like $238, and that's for diesel. Inside is like $214. It's right now like $311, and gas is going up. So that's not a viable option in my eyes.
We don't know what that... We shouldn't close that door because we don't know what the number would be. Just because the retail's $314, that doesn't mean we couldn't get it for...
We get it for $214. Right.
I don't think they would sell it to us for $214, but I don't think they would sell it for $3 either. I think there would be...
I just...
We may want to explore, go out, see what the numbers come back, see if it makes sense before we make this type of investment.
Because you're talking 65 grand, yeah, right?
65 is 65, so I mean...
Yeah, everything.
Yeah.
I just don't think we should fly... Again, I used to...
You want more control?
I mean, it's three years. It's close to three years. And I think we need to sit down and really look at this and go in a direction.
Is this for gas and diesel?
Yes.
Yeah, it would be.
It would do for both.
One for each, right?
It would be, yes. It wouldn't be 65 for each pump or anything like that.
Right, no, no, no. But that would cover both.
Both pumps.
At the pleasure of the council.
I mean, it's a capital expense, so we do a capital bond every year. We did the cameras, we did the tracking in the cars.
We had this conversation several months ago.
We've done other things, that tracking in the cars. We've done things to find efficiencies and to kind of police...
I mean, again, we had this conversation, and I did not get any...
Even if you're talking about it's costing us 50 cents more a gallon to go outside, that's per gallon. So that's... Right, but so every 20-gallon tank, that's $10 right there. I mean, it's not going to take you long with police cars and DPW to get the $60,000.
And education. And the Board of Education.
And the Board of...
It's at least a dollar. You're talking a dollar a gallon.
The Board of Education doesn't... It doesn't cost us anything for the Board of Education. They pay for that.
They reimburse.
Yeah.
They reimburse.
There's no... Yeah, there's no cost to the Board of Education.
So the Board of Education, are they interested in sharing it with us?
Exactly.
We could ask.
Yes.
There would be someone from the board.
I mean, from what I just heard, we're putting someone out there for Number 9. It's a nice talk. It's a nice conversation.
Maybe they would be so inclined, since we're redoing their ball field at Number 9.
Okay, I'll have a conversation with Tomco and come back.
But even we got to split it, because they have a fleet, we have a fleet. I mean, what's the big deal?
Exactly.
Come back at the next council meeting. We like it.
Thank you.
Next.
And they're just checking up on the parking meters because, you know, again, this has gone on three years, and I know the chief has been looking into it multiple times, and just trying to find out because, yes, they're older. We are losing money. We can make some money, some say we don't, some say we do. Everybody else has meters at work, and we don't.
I was just in Nutley today. Credit cards, coins, everything.
So again, this is something that we had already spoken about and discussed. This comes out to about $1,000 a meter. Obviously, it's the latest, smartest, and all that good stuff.
How much a meter?
About $1,000 a meter. Comes with coin, credit card, app, all of the above.
How many meters do we need?
About 250. Well, we're talking about this... I'm sorry, chief. Go ahead. It's just that we were doing the street skate.
The last meters we had were free.
It usually is.
So I don't think there's a... There's definitely not a reason why we wouldn't replace the meters that we have right now. They're outdated.
But to explain something, 250 meters are only along Washington Avenue, and they're no longer in our two lots, because that's not...
No, we already did the lots. Correct.
We sent out for Alan, he came back at like 2:37.
Up to Graylock?
Just Washington Avenue?
Yeah. No, I believe it's anywhere we have meters now.
I don't think we have meters.
What about up to Graylock?
We were adding...
Or past Graylock?
So you added those, and we don't have meters there. You've added those in now. That would be a revenue generator. I mean, we could always piecemeal it in when, as we negotiate community givebacks. Yeah, but as we do like the residential project going across the motorcycle mall, as we start negotiating with them for the community giveback and all that, they can take the meter price from Graylock Parkway to Nutley, both sides. Like, we could, we don't necessarily have to do it ourselves.
Right. We need something to start with, right? For every year that we go by, we're losing something. We're losing it.
So if we do from Mill Street to Town Hall, there's that project down there that we have to use community money for that project.
Then you got this one over here.
Yeah, no, this would definitely be included in the 2021. This is a 2021 capital expense.
But I'm just literally saying we don't need to do capital expense. If we get the developers in the different areas to do a part of the community giveback.
Forget both.
And we're in redevelopment. We're there.
Yeah.
Okay. Another one.
It just takes longer to get from point A to point B that way, but understandable.
Okay. Next.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Ikono.
What?
Councilman Cazarelli might need to help me on this one, but we...
Mural.
What are you doing?
Councilman Cazarelli may help me on this one because I did send it out to the entire council. There was a picture which would be on the...
Rendering?
Rendering over across the street from the Dutch Reformed Church.
I didn't get that, by the way.
It's an email that definitely went out, but we'll send it out again. But it's the actual, we have a rendering of it, and it's a contract, and that's how we wanted to bring it up and just...
Do you have it to display?
No.
No. I didn't get it, so I can't...
So a brief little description of it, who didn't see the email. Basically, we have a grant. We were awarded a grant for a historic mural down in front of the Dutch Reformed Church. It's basically going to be an artist interpretation of some of the little-to-unknown stories of the revolution, of some local history stories we don't know about. There's some Native American stories. There's some Chinese immigration stories. So it's not words, it's pictures, but it's going to tell a story in pictures without words, basically.
And you can pull it up. You're not live on that.
You got it? You can put it up?
Yeah, you're not live. That's just internal.
Oh, Jackie may have it.
We're not live on that, right? We're just live on the dais?
Correct.
Okay.
So again, this is the artist rendering, which we could again tweak and, you know, see, but it's telling the unknown stories of Belville, of the revolution, of some history. You know, not your typical...
It's the second version, because I didn't like the first version.
Yeah, this is the second version. So we actually went back to them and said it's got to be a little more local. We got to have some little more local history in there. But again, this is not the typical picture of George Washington on a billboard. It goes deeper into conversation than that, if you could find it.
It's loading. The picture's loading?
Any data now? Loading? Don't look like it's loading.
It's just a...
Save it locally. Save it to your desktop.
I can't see. Yeah, very small. Dude.
There we go.
Yeah, there you go. That's better.
Okay. So as you can see, you have some of the Chinese immigration. There's someone depicting the Native Americans that were in our area before the revolution. There's obviously a little bit about Belville with the cannon, Belville's famous cannon that we had in the revolution. There's a depiction of the church. And again, these are not going to be the actual pictures, but this is just a rendering, you know, for Photoshop's sake of what it could look like. But this is the general idea, you know. Also, a lot of African-Americans that were involved in the revolution played a big part. Little-to-unknown stories, just highlighting those little-to-unknown stories. So again, not your typical George Washington, picture of George Washington mural. It goes a little deeper, deeper into conversation and deeper into thought. Right, and the timeline goes all the way back, you know, to obviously Native Americans, you know, early American history here.
Okay.
When did this all happen?
No, it didn't happen yet.
It didn't go up yet. No, this is just a... No, this is just.
She's trying to get a grant.
You're trying to get a grant for this, right?
Right. No, we did get the grant.
They got a grant for it.
And the grant specific. Oh, everyone knew, no, everyone knew. But it's okay. So part of the grant was an artist, you have to use a local artist. That was part of the grant. So this is a local artist from Newark, actually, that, that gave us the rendering.
Is this the?
Anyone have any comments, questions? No comments, questions? And that was the email though, that you pulled up though, that everyone got, right?
Yeah, it was the email.
Everybody got an email. That's how you.
I mean, I didn't get the email, which is okay, but this is, even if I had gotten the email, it's, this is not the first time we've discussed.
Oh, no, no.
This has been before the council many, many times.
That's okay.
Mayor, I just wanted to bring up the, it seems like sometimes people get upset about certain things that get brought up. And I think that, you know, maybe we need to explore, and this is a suggestion for, for our manager, to explore what's the best way to communicate with certain council members that seem to consistently not know what's going on. So I think that.
Way would be to attend council meetings.
Okay.
That's usually the best way because everything we do is discussed at a council meeting or a work session. And then we vote on resolutions that accept grants. So that would be the best way.
And, you know, things that have been put on writing, I'm just kind of, you know, I do think that it reflects poorly in us as a council when we come here to the end of a project and people seem to be confused as to what is going on. So my suggestion is just that maybe anyone that has questions about these projects discusses with the manager what's the best way for them to communicate because maybe, maybe email isn't it. But it's just, I, I find it unacceptable for us to come to this moment to consistently be confused as to what's happening. So I just wanted to share that.
Good point. Next item on our agenda is the report of the manager.
So I'm gonna jump around a little bit, but let me start off by saying that today we were very fortunate to find out that $1.9 million were deposited into our account from the state of New Jersey. This is the Recovery Act. This is the COVID money that we spoke about. So they, it came, it came through, it's 1.9.
How much of that money is obligated in this year's budget?
Zero.
Nice.
And we get 1.9 next year as well.
How much of that is obligated?
That's the second part, okay.
Think about next year's budget. So we're going into, so what I just wanted to, you know, share with you on the second sheet that I handed out, which was something that, there's six categories of what you can actually spend the money on.
Oh, this one.
And the first category is replacing lost public sector revenues. So that was, as you know, we probably lost $3 million.
Yeah, yeah.
And we did a great, great job of, you know, trying to recover our loss of revenues by actually introducing a great budget. And we were able to do so. We did it without any of this recovery money. So some municipalities have not adopted their budget yet and will be using their recovery money. In our case, we, our budget is just waiting to be approved by DCA. And we're getting another 1.9 next year. The one sheet I handed out shows you every municipality in the state of New Jersey. You have one town that actually received $1,500 and Newark received $176 million. We are in the category of under 50. It's, it's done by population, different categories. So we're under the, under 50,000 category. But again, 3.8 million dollars.
Who sold from the 50,000?
Not according to, not according to Wikipedia. Wikipedia, it says like 50,001.
Feds don't use Wikipedia.
Someone updated the day before the.
The feds use census, not Wikipedia.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know what their census is, but they definitely got.
More.
The 50.
Yeah.
So moving right into, take my show on the road here. Moving right into my report.
We only got 25 million, that's all. 25 mil.
Are you switching that?
Bullfield.
Yes. So I wanted to show everybody the progress that we're making over at the stadium. Obviously, it's something we're very proud of. It's coming along great. A new eight lane track that we don't have to be able to really, really enjoy the facilities and the fields. But the northeast retaining wall, which is in this picture right here, is now complete. Came out really, really good looking. And when the project's done, it's just gonna be just, it's actually gonna be very pretty looking as well. We continue with the surcharge on the track field. And that's just, we're just waiting for continual settlement. The Varsity Football Field, we ripped up the old turf. And the new turf is in production. We're hoping to see the new turf down in three weeks. So obviously, that would be well before football season, keeping our fingers crossed. New curbing has been.
Can I interject there for one second, Mr. Manager? So I just want the council to know that we started with about 60, I did this, this math, 64,000 square feet of turf. The new complex will have close to 240,000 square feet of turf. That is a four, we've quadrupled, quadrupled the amount of turf in one, one project.
We're full. And that's another picture of the turf. So we have new curbing scheduled to be poured this week. Players shelters are in production and slabs are being formed out. LED field lighting, the conduit has been run and new foundations and poles to be installed in the next week to 10 days. So that was the progress that we're making on that project. And.
Now for your manager's report.
That's so funny.
That was the manager's?
Still so. Pictures, we continue, people are using the new dog park, even though we didn't have the official grand opening, we're still working on it. But we're getting a lot of great use out of it. And that's another update that I wanted to provide to the mayor and council. And certainly be available for any additional questions later on.
Okay. That's it? No trees trimmed? Dog, cats and trees? Mayor, no, I'm the mayor. Council members have any, any questions or comments or?
Jersey City got 139 million? Wow.
Yeah, Anthony, you and I spoke about this today. There's another problem. We had this problem last year with mail. My neighborhood, once again, the entire neighborhood is, they're gone like four days without mail and then they get mail for a day. I know one of my neighbors did go online because she couldn't get anybody at the post office. And it said, well, due to COVID, but COVID was basically a last year thing. So if we can look into this, because we did have quite an ongoing problem last summer with this and it seems to have resumed the last couple of weeks. Councilman, if you shoot me an email.
Because you gave a name last year and we can't find that name.
I have it. So I too, in my office, have not received mail nearly two weeks. So yesterday I emailed and today I received a box of mail.
Because you, I think you gave me a name last year, someone from Congressman Series's office.
Right, but now I have the postmaster person.
I will send you.
Email me, I'll either forward your email or I'll give you the contact.
Great, great, great. Thank you.
Anybody else for the manager?
I just had a quick thing because I, I know we talked about this 4th of July and other things. And there seems to be an inordinate amount of noise complaints that we're getting. And I was thinking maybe we should put something out there for people to be considered as their neighbors somehow. You know, we got, we got a couple more today on it. And especially during the 4th of July, I mean, it was, I'm assuming people were a little, little. Yeah, you were, you were going, you guys were going nuts, I know.
So I think your suggestion is to possibly do like a posting, we could please their website, Fire Department's website, our website.
Just keep, you know, the social media, hey, be consider of your.
Noise user.
Noise, you know. There is a noise ordinance, there is a noise ordinance. I know you're having trouble.
Steve, I couldn't agree with you more. I could, I spend a lot of my weekends in the summer, as most of you know, checking into motels because I can't stay in my house. Sad. Okay, so that's it. Next item on our agenda is the report of the mayor. So first, a couple of questions for the manager. I think you were here. So I do recall me, you, I believe the chief and the OVM coordinator meeting and discussing and signing an emergency declaration for the township. Have we released the township? Is that emergency declaration still standing?
It's still standing, we're waiting for the county. When the county ends theirs, we will end ours. And that's just like somewhat the unofficial protocol.
Okay. Next item on, for you is, a couple of weeks ago, I sent you an email, I think the chief was in on that, with regard to keeping some Belleville business in Belleville. I didn't see any communications back and forth with the person who sent me that email. So this person owns a business in Belleville and it's a similar type business that Belleville utilizes. Just gonna give you an example, it could be a gas station, it could be a car wash. And if we have, I'm just speaking broadly, if we have services like that in Belleville, whether it's a gas station or a car wash or an oil change place, we shouldn't really be going outside of Belleville to, with our fleets. And that email suggested that this individual used to have the business, was in Belleville or wants to buy for the business and we're going outside of Belleville for that business. I don't know if we bid that stuff or we just make a decision. Maybe either yourself or the assistant manager, I'll just ask the assistant manager to use the mic, please. No, he can use that one. Okay. You're not using the mic for us, it's for the audience.
Familiar with what you're referring to, Mayor. I agree, we should utilize Belleville businesses when they in fact do a decent job and do what they're paid to do. When that doesn't happen, then you're forced to go somewhere else where you get the required services that you want.
But when we go somewhere else, we should go to the second Belleville business or the third Belleville business. We shouldn't be leaving the town unless it's the only.
I agree also. And that, that's, that's been looked into numerous times throughout the years. I understand now there's a new proprietor that's vying for the business. And I spoke to our purchasing and the manager about looking into switching after the end of the term of this one. So it's not forgotten about.
Right.
But when he speaks that we used to go, we used to go before this person was the owner and they were damaging things and not doing the job. Got it?
Okay, no problem. Next, I got three things, Mr. Manager. Next thing is I had sent an email to you, Mr. Manager, yesterday. I'm only bringing this up today, one, because I think it's the right way to do it. And two, I do believe the resident is probably watching tonight. I received a very long email. When I say very long, I'm talking 17 paragraph long email. That was just one email. I received six subsequent emails from there. Forward them to the manager. This was about a specific issue within Construction Code Department. And I forward that off to the manager. I do know that they're watching because I don't think they could be here today to express that and bring the issue to the mayor and council. So I had just asked the manager to, one, look into it and two, reach back out to the property owner. So I'm just asking if there's any kind of an update with regard to that.
No, not since yesterday, but I'll provide the mayor and council a copy of an update.
Can you provide the council with the initial complaint and all the subsequent emails that came into?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, next up is my manager report, I'm sorry, my mayor's report. So we have some news. I'd like to, first of all, congratulate all of our Italian residents on their victory in the Euro 2020. I think the county did a fantastic job by shutting down Bloomfield Avenue and allowing anybody that wanted to come and root on the team to do so in a safe environment. It was actually a great event. We had a blast and congratulations to Italy for, for, for winning. First time in, I think, 65 years. Next, we already discussed it, not going to waste too much time on it. We are potentially looking at overhauling the entire complex down at number nine school. It started as a free footsole field and it looks as though we might be able to really win for the residents and for our children with a brand new complex down there. That's really good. I don't want to jinx us, and I'm going to say this probably twice during my mayor's report, but there is, has been, and the manager can nod if he agrees with me, some constructive movement with regard to potentially the township moving forward in the acquisition of the Newark Reservoir. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
Yes, we spoke to Kareem yesterday and he said that there's still consideration on that.
So we do have some movement with regard to that.
He used the word consideration.
Yes, he did say we can move forward with talks though.
Yes, he did.
So what we're talking about, an 11 acre park dead smack in the middle of Belleville. I think that's going to be a home run for everybody. This coming Sunday is National Ice Cream Day. Stay tuned to social media as well as the library is also doing an event, I believe, there. Lidl is hiring, they've been in contact with us, they're trying to open up in August. It's $15 an hour, including benefits. Anybody interested? Lidl is a great company. And today I had a meeting with, I was supposed to be with both of our senior clubs, Tuesday and Friday, ended up being only Tuesday, but I believe Friday club has been filled in. We are looking to bring the seniors back. We believe it's safe enough now for them to come back. We've basically given them the green light that they can come back to the senior center starting early August. And there's even some consideration with regard to a welcome back party or an open house to expose more Belleville seniors to what the clubs offer. Upcoming events in the township, Blood Drive is tomorrow from 1 to 6 at the Senior Center. Tomorrow night, Sip and Paint at Bricks, you can paint with Athena. That money does go to benefit the municipal green team to go into different, different events that we do townwide here. Thursday, I was reached out, I think there's a communication on the agenda today. The council general of the country of Peru has reached out and they wanted us to light up our town hall in honor of their 200th year anniversary. We don't have the ability to adequately light up town hall, so I believe the library's doing that since they have that. Coincide with that, the library is actually doing their own Peru event this coming Thursday. So that's nice. This coming Thursday is a busy day in Belleville. We're also, I believe, I keep checking our weather every couple hours because Thursday, it's still looking good, sunny, 91 degrees. We're going to be outside for our second summer concert. It is the Motor City Review, a salute to Motown. That will, I believe, end with some patriotic fireworks. There'll be a DJ there, we encourage all people to bring a chair. You would be sitting in the lawn area, we're going to try and reserve the front, which is more the driveway, the pavement area for some of our seniors and veterans who don't want to walk on the grass. I just found out today that July 20th is Coffee with the Cop. Next Thursday, our summer concert, I'm going a little forward to our summer concerts because we don't have a meeting for another month. Next Thursday's Time Machine, the premier party band. That's going to be really fun. Everybody's familiar with Jersey Sound is going to be July 29th. August 3rd, our police department is at it again. Not only is there Coffee with the Cop, July 20th, but August 3rd, I just found out today, we're doing National Night Out, which is again, another good event.
August 3rd?
August 3rd, right? First Tuesday of the month, August 3rd, National Night Against Crime, more to come. Check our social media, including the police department's social media. August 5th, David Sandito is a salsa band that we're going to have. And August 12th is the Infernos. The rest of the schedule, I can announce at the next council meeting because we do have another council meeting. Past events, as we probably know by now, our first summer concert happened, but it was sort of a washout. I voted to just cancel the whole thing with the chief. No, I did not. No, I did not, but we could not cancel the whole thing, so that was a little, here's the way we worked that out. If we went outside and the rain held, if we went outside and the rain held, it was my call. If we had to move inside and it was a washout, the manager made a terrible decision. So, Mr. Manager.
I enjoyed it.
And I know I don't want to beat up on you, but that was a bad call you made, but in all honesty, we had no other choice. That band, that first band, what happens to that first band is so good, they play in Atlantic City, and they play indoor every Thursday, we could not get a rain date for that.
Never get it back.
It was happen or not, and the "not" ended up being move it inside. Ended up being nice for the fifty or sixty people that were there, but it was nice. Lastly, I want to congratulate all of our graduates for the Junior Police Academy, and all of our police department's efforts to reach out and touch the community. That is it for the report of the mayor.
Just real quick, through the chair, did we put the Peruvian flag up for them, or do we have a Peruvian flag?
We do it on, I think we have a flag raising scheduled.
For this?
We do it at the flag raising, yeah. I think it's, what days it happening? We usually do them Friday afternoons. We had an organization that requested it, so therefore, we're going to wait.
We're going to, okay.
Friday, yeah, next Friday. We had a local Peruvian organization that requested it, so we're going to hold it until then.
Okay.
But, yeah.
So we don't want to put it up now?
Yeah. That's it. Next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes.
Make a motion?
Yeah, we can do that. Motion made in second, clerk, oh, no, no, not yet.
Can I read it?
You jumped the gun, Steve.
Sorry.
Hershey's got to read it.
Hey.
Madam Clerk.
I'm coming.
Nope, technical difficulties.
I haven't eaten dinner yet, so.
Combined conference and regular meeting of February ninth.
Now I'll get a motion.
Make a motion?
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstains? None? We're in. Next item on our agenda is communications.
A letter received from Yvonne E. Solari Calvo, Council General of Peru, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania, requesting the township to illuminate town hall with Peru's national colors from Monday, July twenty-sixth to Friday, July thirtieth, in celebration of Peru's two-hundred years of independence and honoring the township of Belleville's Peruvian community.
And as I mentioned, the library is going to kind of take that one on for us. Next item on the agenda is ordinances for introduction.
Ordinance number one, an ordinance authorizing township-owned property not needed for public use by private sale pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, colon, twelve, dash, thirteen, B, five.
Make a motion, introduce?
Second. Motion made in second, introduce, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumeloburk.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes, number two.
Ordinance to amend Chapter twenty-three zoning of the Township Code regulating marketplace classes of licenses cannabis businesses as conditional uses in the Township of Belleville.
Need a motion?
So moved.
I just want, I just wanted, before we voted on this, I had a very, very nice conversation today with Steve Martino, and he really explained this in detail. And I don't know, can Steve explain this now? Because I know some.
It's only intro at this point.
Yeah, it's not even.
All right.
It's only intro.
Just so they know, if anybody had any questions, they can call me.
Yep. I do know that the attorney emailed out everything a couple weeks ago.
Yeah.
And subsequently, he's reached out to us all individually.
Okay. I made a motion?
Yep, we have a motion made in second, motion made in second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumeloburk.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes, number three.
Ordinance de leaning Code Chapter two, dash, three, point, four, E, in creating the position of purchasing agent and public bidding threshold under Chapter two, dash, three, point, six, purchasing.
Make a motion, introduce?
Second.
Motion made in second to introduce, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumeloburk.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Ordinance for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing, and ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Township of Belleville, Chapter eight, dash, six, A, stop sign intersections designated.
Need a motion, open public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, open public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstains? Abstentions? No. Okay, so now we are at the point where we're going to hear any public commenting specifically on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to close public hearing, move for final.
Motion to close and move for final.
Motion made in second to close, move for final adoption, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumeloburk.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance number two for public hearing, and ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Township of Belleville, Chapter eight, dash, two, point, two, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets.
Need a motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now open for public hearing on this particular ordinance and only this particular ordinance. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close, move for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumeloburk.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance number three for public hearing, and ordinance to amend Chapter twenty-seven, Section thirteen, Part I, of the Codified Ordinances, towing and storage.
Need a motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are now open for public hearing on this particular ordinance, this particular ordinance only, Mr. Frantantonio.
Can we just have an explanation for the ordinance?
Sure, I believe, Chief is here to correct me if I'm wrong, I believe, is this the one that we're deleting the twenty-dollar record fee?
Yeah.
So we are deleting a twenty-dollar record fee that after you get your car towed, you have to come here, pay twenty dollars, in order to take that piece of paper to the tow yard and have it released. Anybody else? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close, move for final adoption.
So moved.
Motion made in second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumeloburk.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
And ordinance number four for public hearing, and ordinance to amend Chapter two, Section thirteen, point, one, of the Codified Ordinances entitled Administration Police Department Fees.
Need a motion, open public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to open public hearing, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumeloburk.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
And ordinance number four for public hearing, and ordinance to amend Chapter two, Section thirteen, point, one, of the Codified Ordinances entitled Administration Police Department Fees.
Need a motion, open public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to open public commenting, all in favor?
Aye.
The first order of business is to ask the clerk, do we have anybody that emailed in a public comment?
Yes, Mayor, I have one. It is from William Milden the Third, from sixteen Hunkel Street. He states, "I want to ask the mayor if he has any intention of returning the painting that he removed from the library to the rightful owners, namely the Belleville Historical Society. The estimated value of the painting is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. If someone came into your office and removed one of the chairs, I'm sure that you would be arrested for theft and that you would want it back. Michael Perron and David Hatch, along with many others in our once-respected town, also want the painting returned. It would behoove you to think about returning the work of art as soon as possible. Thank you."
Thank you. As previously stated, it will be returned to the library, second that it is safe and the roof is fixed. I believe they're taking quotes as we speak. Anybody else email in?
That is it, Mayor.
Okay, so any public, anybody in the audience for public comments? Mrs. Frantantonio, just to remind everybody to, Chief, can you see if that is on? Just, just going to need you to use the microphone.
Phyllis Frantantonio, down Prospect Avenue. First, I want to ask if there's any thing being done further on that light by ShopRite? Are, you know, are they proceeding with it?
State, I guess.
It's, I think, there's nothing new since the last time we gave the update. The update was, we're working with the DOT and their upcoming road improvement program, but we're also going to be negotiating that into the developer. We have not started that talk yet, but that is definitely a topic that we'll be discussing.
Through the chair, real quick, and we did speak with PCNG, who's building a, myself and at that point, Deputy Mayor Graziano spoke with PCNG, they're doing a new substation there on Washington Avenue, and they said they would gladly contribute to that.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so it is in the works.
Okay. Now, I know ordinance number two was only for introduction, but I want to say something because I hope that you council people will really think hard about it and think about it with your soul. We don't need any of this in our town. We don't need any marijuana distribution centers in our town. I agree fully with medical marijuana, but not for pleasure. I testified at a state senate hearing on this, and the people that got up to speak, you got to hear some of the stories. There was a couple that came in from Colorado who had a two-year-old daughter. They had to leave because they couldn't walk their daughter in the street without her inhaling the smoke that these people were smoking. So, it's not a good thing for our children. In today's record, over a hundred municipalities have opt out of it. They don't want it in their towns. And the mayor of Point Pleasant, where is it from? He's from Point Ple, from Point Pleasant Beach, said he doesn't need any more new vices in his town, and we don't need it in our town. We are right next to Newark. I just wish that you would think about it and think of the ramifications of this, because this is a stepping stone. It is not that you're only going to smoke marijuana and that's it. This is a stepping stone onto other drugs, and you're not going to get rid of anybody selling it that's not legal. You're not going to get rid of illegal drugs. What do we do? When we had the DARE program, when we had Say No to Drugs, what do we tell our kids? Okay, say no to drugs, and this and that, till you're eighteen, then go smoke a joint? This is crazy, this is sick. I know you're doing, you want it into town because you'll get money, but sometimes, you got to stop and think of the welfare of the people and forget about the money. And don't say the kids won't do it, because just like alcohol, you say kids won't do it, kids drink, and they will get these drugs. Please do not go on with this, think hard about this resolution when it comes up, and vote no to go forward with it. We don't need this type of situation in Belleville. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Dros?
Two, we have to take these off the table. Dros, ninety-five Bell Street. In regards to the reservoir, just got to remember, got to get rid of the deer that's hanging around there first, because I do see them walking around all the time, deer.
They're all over the place.
Okay, in regards to ordinance for introduction, number three, I just, for clarification, you have here, the purchasing agent shall be appointed by the mayor and council. I don't agree with that, I think that is incorrect with our former government. I think the language is incorrect, "shall." Mr. Manager?
Does it have to be?
I don't know who put this together. I think you're, no, it's just mayor and council. I think this is, the ordinance, the appointment should be by the township manager, according to the Faulkner Act.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to bring that to your attention. Also, for clarification, I noticed at the last town meeting, the vote for a signage was three-three, and I believe Deputy Mayor DePena didn't vote for it, and it's my understanding that the business would have benefited from that ordinance if it was passed, is that why you had to abstain?
Mario, you need to address the chair.
I am, I'm looking at both of you, I'm looking at both of you.
Okay, so you can make comments, you can make a comment.
I made my comment.
Okay.
So I think that that was a personal benefit which should never have been put on the agenda. And the use of police cars, I noticed that you're still using the police cars. Have you used the police car recently to a trip to New York City? Or a while back?
No.
Okay, no, I'm not accusing you of it, I'm just telling you what people are talking, but that doesn't mean it's true. And I noticed that Fourth of July, you were using a police vehicle?
When you say "use," you got to really define what you say.
Okay, you had a show, a police driver chauffeur you around or drive you around to different, to events that the mayor crashed their barbecue.
I've done that for three years, every single July.
Okay, but you're using a police vehicle, and your sign says Pound Better Belleville. That's a personal issue, not a town, that's not, it should have said Township of Belleville, then you're representing the town. You were representing either yourself or Better Belleville. Which one is it? It's on the sign. I didn't make the sign up, you did.
Now we're negotiating hashtags on social media?
I'm just telling you, I'm starting to look now, I finally got on social media, that's why I know.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, I know, please. That's that. And also, I understand that one of the vehicles that was driving you around had an accident? Is that true? One of the police vehicles driving you around?
You're being a little, you're being a little generic when you say "driving me around."
Well, they are, well, they're not walking with you.
I was in a police.
They're not on a bicycle.
I was in a police vehicle when there was an accident.
You were, right. Why are you continuing, who is allowing this to happen? I mean, the council is responsible for all of this. I mean, I have never seen this in thirty years where a police, any of the council members are utilizing the police department to drive them to Atlantic City or somewhere, and then probably paying overtime, no doubt about it.
Go down the list of council members and see if they've ever been in a police vehicle?
I haven't seen it, you're the only one that I know of.
Okay, but that doesn't mean nobody else has ever been in one.
Well, if I.
You haven't seen.
If I know about it, I would bring it up.
I know about it.
But you are, I think, over utilizing the police vehicles.
Thank you.
And, just one for clarification, who's the secretary to the council?
I would say that would be the municipal clerk.
And deputy municipal clerk?
Sure.
In her absence, I'm just, you know, I would hope that you stop utilizing the deputy municipal clerk as your personal secretary.
Well, what you don't know, Mario, is that the deputy municipal clerk, who you seem to have a serious problem with, because you.
No, I don't, I don't.
You came up here at every meeting and talked about it. You let me answer, or you ask the question?
Well, I want to answer, I want to finish, so then you can answer me. All right, then you give me an extra minute, go ahead.
What you don't realize is that the deputy municipal clerk serves in two capacities. She also serves in a capacity as aide to the mayor and council, which was her original job, and then she took a second job, which was deputy municipal clerk, and for anybody who's tallying up salaries, she's doing both jobs for the price of less than what the previous person was doing one job for. So if you're tallying up salaries, that's a cost savings for somebody doing two different jobs.
That's not what I'm bringing up, I'm not disputing her salary at all.
Said that she's not the secretary.
I said, is she secretary to you personally or the entire council? That's my question.
The entire council.
And one last thing, when was the resolution authorizing the fireworks, since we didn't have them on the Fourth of July? Was that, was there a resolution authorizing?
No, you seem to always quote the Faulkner Act, so the Faulkner Act actually gives the manager that ability.
I didn't see any resolution, I just wondered who authorized.
Because I just got done saying, there is no resolution, the manager makes that decision according to the Faulkner Act.
Okay. You're done?
I'm done. Anybody else? Mr. Frantantoni?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The, um, this is a follow-up to, my wife said, uh, I'll bring it up at the next meeting if there's a public hearing. Hopefully, maybe you'll cancel it, but personally, we've had some serious problems with this marijuana, with the couple of nephews, tenants, and personal employees of mine. Several of my neighbors, three of my customers, real serious problems in their families and their businesses with this, quote, harmless recreational marijuana. So, let's end it before we even have a public hearing. We don't need it. We don't want it in Belleville. We don't need it. I mean, you're starting to see more and more homeless people. I mean, they, they sit in my laundromat, disturb my urinating and all that. We don't need another vice in this town. And this is not, this is not, as I will expound at the next meeting, a harmless recreational thing. And anybody, I don't know why anybody in the world would wanna take anything, whether it be beer to excess or to dull their brain. I don't understand it. And you had a businessman years ago, had two businesses, one in Belleville, one in Bluefield, personal friend of mine. He lost both businesses because we took, went over for dinner, and after the, "Come on, man, let's go downstairs, light up a joint." I, "What are you, crazy?" He said, "No, man, you gotta chill." Lost both businesses for recreational marijuana. Now, Mr. Mayor, you know, I keep tabs on state, local, county officials and all that. When you raised the water rates at the high school meeting with that 100, 150 people there...
Entire mayor and council voted to raise the water rates.
Okay, but you're the one that made the statement that we have to raise it higher for businesses because they make a profit, and all utilities charge more for businesses. I forgot to do it, but today I remembered. That's not so.
Electric and gas, PSCG charges more.
Well, let me tell you something. I have the business and I have residential property, and here it is, the gas. On my private home, Mount Prospect Avenue, the gas, I pay 1.02, a dollar two per term, right? On my business, I pay .90.8 cents. And the reason is, businesses get LVG, large volume gas. So, they, we pay less for businesses, for my gas electric, than I do at home. So, you're mistaken. I don't know where you get your information, but I have the bills if you wanna see the bills. So, once again, you're wrong. Also, with your gas solution, you got a problem. We had a problem when I took office. Everybody knew that town employees were quietly filling up their vehicles. Now, we come up with solutions, but anytime we'd come up with a government, it's always dollar figures, $65,000. It was a simple solution. All I did was create a chart. Anybody had to fill up, you had to fill up the vehicle number, the mileage on the vehicle, how many gallons it took, the date and time, you filled it up, all right? Within three months, our use of gasoline went down. We had accurate accounts. And then one day, I used to review the sheets. One day, I see one vehicle went 460 miles or something. Well, wait, it was a maintenance vehicle running around town. How could you do that? Brought in the supervisor, there you find a legitimate excuse. He had to pick up some equipment that we bought in Deptford, New Jersey. So, it was 150 miles each way, and that was the excuse. But, we didn't spend $65,000. I mean, these things are so simple. So simple to do. But, you know, and I was making $6,000 a year. Now, we got 150 town manager, and all we come up is $65,000 solution for a simple thing. It's all a matter of paperwork, and that was in pencil and paper. Today, you have computers, again, with all your technology, how great it works. I'm sure you could do something like that. We could keep more accurate account of our gas solution, right?
Mr. Frantantoni.
Uh, and the final thing is, um, resolutions die at the reorganization meetings. So, what happened to the Great Lawn?
Uh, and I need you to wrap up with that comment, but the Great Lawn, there was, I think, an issue with it, and we put on the table, no one was gonna die to be probably reintroduced to the next council meeting?
Not at the next council meeting. We've got the, uh, our eminent domain council, uh, looking at it.
Okay, it's gonna come back.
Looking at the letter.
Oh, cause I...
It's gonna come back.
Like I said, I oped the legal expenses about five, six years ago. At that time, they were over 125,000. I'm sure there's more. So, I can't understand how we have all these great expensive lawyers and we can't resolve that thing. In fact, I forgot the, I'll give it to the town manager tomorrow. The legal, you weren't here at the last meeting, Mr. Martino.
I do need you to wrap up, Mr. Frantantoni.